We do not have a special guest, so I guess I'm gonna call the meeting order. Alrighty, let's call the roll.
Matthews, Weaver.
Here.
Fled.
Here.
Bolt.
Here.
Rutherford.
Here.
Steve Horn.
Here.
Falter.
Here.
We have a form.
Alrighty, very good. I'm gonna invite up a special guest. We've got President Heath Thomas from OBU gonna come up and do our invocation. So you guys stand for that.
Thank you very much. Join me, please. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in Oklahoma and the great city of Shawnee the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. We ask, oh Lord, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve their office to promote the good of all people in our community. Through Christ our Lord we ask these things. Amen.
Thank you very much. If you'll join us in the flag salute, a pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, citizen participation. I think, do I have my list? I just have the one. Okay, so same rules as always, three-minute limit per person, 12-minute limit per topic. I only see one person that signed up. We will not respond to you directly at that time. We are listening, I promise. So Rob Morris, come on up. How are you?
Pretty good. How about you?
Doing well.
I can't reply, but pretty good. I actually am coming a little bit in defense of the city tonight. The grant program, well, the task force isn't anonymous anymore. I mean, in front of you is four names that are on that task force that were given to me by someone who absolutely knows beyond question. So I don't really see why that was a big sticking point for them at the beginning. There's been 21 applicants as of Monday, one from Tecumseh, two from Shawnee, 18 from the county. Now, with that, that would make $105,000, at $5,000 apiece, which coincidentally is what they have. The county didn't give $100,000. Going back and watching the video, Eddie Stackhouse said up to 100 if Shawnee didn't give anything, that way they would have the original 100 they wanted to begin with. So as it stands, everybody's just gonna get what should have been done at the beginning, which is you take one number, divide it by the number of people, and everybody gets a check that qualifies for the program. So, I just thought that was interesting to point out. Now, the rubric, it's under my impression from speaking with the commissioner that you guys weren't given a copy of that rubric, your second page. The very number-one line of that second page, if you are not an up-to-date paid member of either of the chambers of commerce of Shawnee or Tecumseh, you don't get that extra five points, which could put you in line for more money than anyone else if you are a paid member. That shows preference, and the whole point of this was to be fair to everybody, not show preference if you're a member of a chamber or not. Now, Tecumseh Chamber of Commerce on their own Facebook page said, flat out, still there now, if you're a member, you will receive extra points for being a member. That's not fair, and I don't benefit from any of this money. I don't have a small business. But if we're gonna be fair, we're gonna be fair. It's not a pay-to-play, because that means you have to gamble on joining a chamber or not at the chance to get more money, or a better chance at money, because if you don't join, you don't get the extra five points. Lastly, real quick, I think the city commission could call up Shawnee Ford and have them explain to y'all why this stuff was left out, and why apparently it wasn't public information until the program went live on Wednesday, when it came in front of y'all on Monday. I didn't understand it then and don't now, and if they told y'all one thing, which they did, and then went and did something else, I don't like that, because that means they lied or omitted to y'all, and that's not cool. The other thing, at the county commission, which you can go to Franchise Media and look it up online, county commissioners' meetings are online, Shawnee Ford said they went to talk to Seminole, which is outside of Pott County. Are they gonna do that for free?
Rob, good stuff.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else tonight? Alright, very good. Give you one last chance. Alrighty, item two, consider approval of consent agenda. Anybody have anything you'd like to pull out of consent agenda tonight? Anybody like to make a motion?
I approve this.
Alrighty, so Mark.
Second.
And Sandra Lee Bob. Alright, we got a motion and a second, and let's call the question. Motion passes six-zero. Very good. I think we should be up for the pet of the week. I think I heard something out there. Did I hear a cat?
Yes, sir.
There we go. Lot of hurt cats.
It's something that's been sick.
So Darren take all three.
Alright, so in the shelter right now, we have 16 dogs, five cats, and one pig. This is Sky and Mittens. They're both roughly around eight weeks old. They'll be up for adoption tomorrow. Decided to try out cats today instead of dogs, but wanted to inform that we have a doghouse drive, new or used, for the community. Anybody that has any that wants to donate them to the shelter, then we give them out to people in the community that needs them for the cold, for their dogs. And we wanted to let everyone know that we appreciate all the rescue groups that have been helping us in getting dogs homes, and all the support that we're getting from the community right now is a lot of help. We have a bunch of food and toys and gifts for the dogs, and we're gonna be able to help out some families and stuff with that. And I think that's it. Yep, that's it.
So what about this pig? Is this formerly a pet, a pock-bellied pig that you have?
So they're on legal hold currently, but it is a number at our shelters, so we do go ahead and let you guys know, but it's on legal hold. It's pending, it's pending court.
Was it a pet?
I'm sorry?
Was it a pet?
Yes.
Yes.
So what, as far as the doghouses go, what would be, I've seen some doghouses that probably would not do you guys any good, you know, so are there, is there a better way to just, than just have people just dropping off stuff? What would be the?
We can pick those doghouses up. It doesn't matter if they're used, there's just a lot of dogs in the community that we're finding do not have good housing and shelters. And so, rather than cite somebody who's maybe down on their luck right now, and with all the COVID stuff going on, everybody's having a hard time, so we're, rather than writing those citations, we're trying to do everything we can to help these families and not kick people when they're down. So they wanna keep their family, they want, they love their dogs, they wanna keep their dogs. We're just trying to help them, help, you know, help them help their dog and keep their dogs.
So calling the shelter would be the best way to get an opportunity for one of you guys to go look at it and see if you could use it?
You know, it can be homemade, that's fine. I mean, we've got, one of our volunteers' husband is actually making dog shelters out of the plastic barrels, the 55-gallon plastic barrels, so it can be homemade, it doesn't matter just so long as it'll keep them out of the weather and keep them warm through the winter. That's really all we're looking for.
Good. So you help, you get those distributed to those, sometimes in lieu of a fine or removing the dog?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Good deal.
We've got lots of food that's been donated for cats and for dogs, and so we've had several calls of families who can't afford dog food. They love their dogs, they want their cats, they wanna keep them, they're just having trouble feeding them. So the food that gets donated is the food that we give out to the community and try to keep those dogs.
And that would be the same number to call if they needed assistance that way as well?
Correct, yes.
Fantastic.
Okay, good.
Very good.
We do deliver, so.
Alright.
Yeah, what's the cost?
The kittens, so the kittens are, it's $5 voucher fee. They're too young to be fixed right now, so they'll each be an additional $25 deposit for their spay and neuter, and they'll need a prepaid for rabies vaccinations, because they're also not old enough for rabies vaccinations. And that rabies vaccination usually runs about $12 or so at most vets around town, so it can be at their choice.
What's the sex of the kittens?
We believe they're both male.
Both male, okay.
And they're up for adoption tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow?
Yeah, cool.
Anybody?
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you guys.
Alrighty, number four, we've got a mayor's proclamation, and we're gonna do this a little different item, and I'm gonna ask Commissioner Weaver to join me down front. And I'll go by and pick that thing up and we'll get this done. Okay, Mike and Wayne, alright, I'm gonna let you, I'm gonna let you take it, how's that? Alright, I get to act like the mayor and read a proclamation tonight.
And tell them why.
Well, I'm gonna start off by saying that my dad, Bill Weaver, was manager of KGFF Radio for 35 years, and he started when they were about 24-years-old, if my history tells me right.
That's right.
So I know the year he started, that was 1954, which was the year I was born, and so that's kind of significant to me, you know, it's kind of a good time. And he retired in 1988, which was the year that I was elected to the House of Representatives. So that's kind of some good history, but Wayne Griggs was the immediate manager that followed Dad as manager, and Mike, I think, has been at KGFF. Mike Askins is the current manager, and I think he's been there longer than Dad was through his manager and his.
Forty-four years.
Yeah, see, so here's a lot of history. And I'm honored that I get to be a part of this and to read the proclamation and to honor KGFF for 90 years of service to the Shawnee area. KGFF 90th Anniversary Celebration Day, whereas KGFF has served the community of Shawnee and Potawatomi County at large for 90 years broadcasting for the first time on December 10th, 1930, and whereas KGFF has consistently cast the spotlight on local news since their beginning, providing coverage of local events that have impacted the citizens of Shawnee and surrounding communities, and whereas KGFF has historically worked closely with local news to keep local communities up to date with current affairs, including establishing a system to alert the public and provide live coverage of wartime events as soon as information was acquired during World War II. And whereas KGFF began broadcasting by giving local talents a platform, the first hour of their broadcast was a devotional hour from Reverend W.A. Carter from the Church of the Nazarene. Since then, hours of broadcasting included live performances from local musicians and bands, and whereas KGFF remains persistent in their desire to best provide the entertainment that is most desired by local citizens. Now, therefore, I edbolt, Mayor of the City of Shawnee, I could have said Mayor of Bob Weaver, but that wouldn't sound right. By the authority vested in me to be hereby proclaim the 10th day of December 2020 to be KGFF 90th Anniversary Celebration Day. Mike, Wayne.
Well.
Seeing you.
Thank you very much.
And I know you're never shy to talk, Mike.
No.
It'd be great if you would address and just make a comment.
And if you turn around, I bet Chance might get your picture.
Alright.
Can we get your picture for the media?
Wayne, come on, Wayne, Wayne, you don't get up that easy.
Where are your people can take pictures, too?
Go ahead.
There we go. I'm smiling.
Me, too.
Everyone gets a pass, I'll smile.
Thank you.
Well, Bob's dad actually gave me my first job in radio. My father worked for KGFF in the 60s for him, Bill, and in 1976, I was a junior in high school, and they were looking for somebody to do a high school reporter, and I was really shy. Okay, I tried to be shy, but I, I got the job, and then Bill offered me a full-time job a few years later, and in, let's see, February 1979, I went full-time, and I've been there every day since. So it's a great opportunity for me to be a part of this community, and I'm very thankful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Alright.
Thank you, Mayor. Glad to be part of it. Glad to do that. Couldn't let that go.
Alright. Is that Chance?
You gonna read the title?
Okay, so number five, presentation by Dr. Heath Thomas, president of Oklahoma Baptist University, so President Thomas, I think, is gonna come and give us an update, is that, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm pleased to announce, to introduce Dr. Heath Thomas. He's the president of Oklahoma Baptist University. I believe he took his appointment in January of 2020 of this year. Mr. Thomas is gonna give an update on the campus activities and the things going on at OBU, so I'll turn the podium over to him.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. Chance, thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, thank you so much for the opportunity to share an update from OBU with all of you and with our community. I do bring you greetings from Bison Hill. I'd like to say that OBU continues to fulfill our grand purpose of transforming and equipping students to be positive change agents in our communities, and this is true even amidst the challenges we faced associated with COVID-19. We continue to make a difference. Ninety-nine percent of our graduating class this past spring gained employment or matriculated into graduate school. This is despite the challenges of COVID-19 pandemic as well as economic challenges. That bodes well for OBU and indeed for this community. What about this fall? Well, this fall, 87% of our classes met face-to-face rather than online. We were physically distanced all throughout the campus with masks and regular sanitization processes in all of our public spaces. This 87% of our on-campus face-to-face classes is a real gift and a great accomplishment in our challenging times. Right now, we're planning for the spring to meet on-campus, face-to-face, physically distanced, with masks, committed to our Christ-centered, world-class, transformational education. And we're constantly watching all of the environmental changes that we see, just like many in our community are. And so, we continue our physically-distanced, masked sanitization procedures into 2021, and yet we're adding some additional protocols, not only to be promoting a healthy campus community, but also a healthy community and neighbor here in Shawnee. So what we're planning to introduce, and we sent an email out to our students yesterday, we're introducing a baseline COVID-19 testing policy prior to our students' return to campus, and then weekly sample testing for the 2021 academic year. The reason for this is from a consultation that we've received from CDC. We were on a Zoom call with Deborah Burks. She recommended this. There's some studies out of Duke University that indicate this, this process of weekly testing with sample testing lowers incidence and spread significantly. We believe this will be a help not only to OBU, we believe this will be a help to our community, and we want to be good neighbors. So in this, we press forward together. OBU's future shapers and alumni inspire us to charge forth with purpose. This fall, we equipped 417 new freshmen and 1,763 total students amidst all of the challenges of our COVID-19 world. We work towards a fresh articulation of OBU's mission, vision, and values, as well as OBU's purpose, so that others can begin to catch the vision of a university that asks a very basic question, and the question is simply this: How can we help? How can we help Shawnee? How can we help our community? How can we help our schools? How can we help our businesses? How can we help our county? How can we help? It was over 110 years ago that our forebears asked a very similar question. On the eve of a new state, our forebears determined the great need of their day was a distinctively Christian higher education that shaped hearts and minds of the next generation so they might serve their world, strengthen churches, and lead their communities. They ask the question we must ask today as OBU: How can we help? Their answer to that question created the Baptist University of Oklahoma in 1910. Those pioneers of the future invested in this university to train the next generation of men and women on equal terms in our charter to help their community. Our pioneers envisioned men and women equipped, and I want to quote our charter from 1910, they wanted men and women equipped in, quote, "all branches of advanced learning," and then they proposed what they meant by this. They wanted learning in literature, law, medicine, music, technology, theology, various branches of science, fine arts, various branches of professional and technical education. This is from our founding charter. These future shapers were, in fact, forward-thinking visionaries who recognized the uncompromising necessity of such a shape of higher education that would raise up the next generations of leaders for the benefit of Shawnee, of our region, our state, and indeed for the good of the world. Now, at OBU in our current day, just like in their day, we face challenges, and that's to be sure. Families are unsure what the future holds, and so are uncertain about our higher education. In light of the environmental and economic uncertainties, OBU is indeed tightening our belts. We're refining our programs. We're preparing for our future, and we are leveraging all that we are to indeed serve our Lord, serve our churches, but listen very carefully, we're leveraging all that we are to serve our communities to answer that question: How can we help? Despite our challenges, we believe the great need for OBU perceived by our pioneers in the past in that early morning of the 20th century has dawned once again in the 21st century. It begins with that basic question: How can we help? How can we be a resource? How can we serve? We're committed to answering that question as a good-faith partner in this community and as a good-faith partner in this state. So with this, just this brief update from OBU, I want to thank you for the opportunity to give you an update, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Doctor Thomas, this is probably a good time to ask you, but I'm a former student at St. Gregory's and employee for many, many years, and I love, 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 love St. Gregory's, and I'm excited that it's in the OBU family, but any long-term plans that, again, I know this isn't a good time with all the changes, but any long-term plans?
Yes, thank you very much for the question. I very happily receive it. Yes, there are long-term plans. One of the things that we've been looking at in our desire to answer that question, how can we help, is we've already been working on flexing into some educational areas that we perceive as a need, both in terms of employment in our region and in our broader state, but it extends down into North Texas as well. And that, one of those areas is engineering, and so we're looking at, we've, faculty's already approved a program for aerospace engineering with applications into mechanical systems and electrical engineering. We believe this would add value, because there's a lot of jobs that need to be filled in our area, and we're looking at that space as potentially a place to house. If you're asking about timeline for that, we're working very hard to create and forge strong industry partnerships and community partnerships, and we've already got good headway there, but we want to bring some training labs and some classroom space and some lab space to the green campus, if at all possible, and that's what we're exploring at this time. God willing and everything goes well, you know, our hope is by 2022 to have that engineering program launched, but that's been, you know, a few years in the making, and that's, we're using that space right now already as conference space and meeting space, and we're doing some things, but yeah, COVID has thrown a wrench in everything.
Sure.
Yep.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
And I don't have any comments or questions, I just have some comments. Being an OBU alum and moving to Shawnee because of OBU, but staying because of the amazing people that are here, I've grown to love so much about the university and the students and the faculty and staff. It's just, it just was a huge part of my life for a long time, but as I continue to work in the nonprofit sector, there are so many amazing opportunities that we get through different organizations and sectors of the school that are still trying to reach out and work and do good things, and just, it's, it's amazing to see the, the young, the young people that are coming into this city and the hearts that they have, and how much they long for a better world.
Yeah.
And, and it's just, it's really amazing, and just want to continue to say thank you to the university for, for not only being the shining light on the hill, but also bringing young people here that, that have a heart for making a better world, and just continue to be amazing, and thank you for all your hard work, and, and we know that this is tough. We've had some conversations about this, but keep, keep fighting the good fight, and we know that you will, and just thank you so much for all of your hard work.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anybody else got anything? No? Thank, go ahead, go ahead, Mark, go ahead.
Glad to have him. I mean, I went to school there, my brother graduated from there, my son graduated from there. You know, so it's a pillar of the community. We appreciate, you know, what you've done, you know, to, I mean, really our family. Yeah, I remember, you know, I grew up when Dr. Tanner was here, was best friends with Mark, which was his youngest boy.
Right.
And, you know, got to be a really good friend with the Tanners over the years, you know, before he went, I guess he moved back down to Waco, and I think his boy is still down at Baylor.
I think so, yeah.
Bill?
Think so.
But anyway, we appreciate y'all.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I really appreciate you coming out tonight and giving us the update. You guys are such a big part of our community, and you do so much here in Shawnee, and I know I've gotten to know you and First Lady Jill, and I really enjoyed getting to know you guys and working with you here a little bit, and I know your heart is, you know, big, and you want to do great things here in Shawnee, and I just love how you want everybody to work together, and, I mean, we're just so much stronger that way, but I appreciate you taking time to come out and come to our meeting tonight.
I'm very happy to do it. Thank you. Thank you. And if you haven't met my wife, Jill, she's much more interesting and wonderful than I.
She is a good lady, for sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alrighty, so we are up to consideration of budget amendments. So I bet we're gonna see Ashley. How's Ashley tonight?
I'm lonely if I didn't have something to present. Okay, so this is just the last of the, like, mid-year budget cleanup. It's just realigned for some projects that you guys have already heard about, includes the additional financing that we did for the half-cent sales tax, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Did I get any questions? Well, like I said, probably straightforward. Anybody want to make a motion? Is that all three together? Is that one? Yeah, one at a time.
I think we can do it together.
I think, yeah, I think it's all. Okay, alright, I made a motion. Alrighty, so we got Bob. I think I heard Mark.
Yep.
Alrighty, so we have a motion and a second, so we'll call the question. See him blinking? And it passes six-zero. So this was the interesting one, I thought. Number seven, consideration enter into a three-year lease.
Did I get any questions? Well, it's like I said, probably pretty straightforward. Anybody want to make a motion?
Is that all three together or is that one, is it one at a time?
I think we can do it together.
I think it, yeah, I think it's all.
I make a motion.
All righty, so we got Bob. I think I heard Mark. All righty, so we have a motion and a second, so we'll call the question. See him blinking? And it passes six-zero. So this was the interesting one, I thought. Number seven, consideration enter into a three-year lease for a street sweeper utilizing the Sourcewell contract the amount of $298,000, $2,998,800. And there's Brad.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, this, this replace our, replace, we'll replace our current, uh, 2006 model that is, uh, wore out. Wore out, virtually. Almost beyond repair. Uh, we're looking at over $30,000 in repairs right now, uh, to get that back operational. So this, this lease would, uh, gives us some flexibility. This was an unforeseen, uh, issue. And this is the less, the, the most budget-friendly option that we've, we've came up with.
Okay.
So, uh, this is a new one, correct?
Yeah, yes, sir.
And then at the end of the lease, looks like we can buy it for a dollar, so basically?
So, correct.
We'll, we'll own it after the lease is up.
So it's kind of just a lease purchase?
It's a lease purchase or we, if we so chose at the end of three years, enter into a new lease.
So how long do we go on that first one before we start having issues? I'm sure you have normal maintenance, but?
This past year has, has, we've really seen a, a turn for the worse. It's, your use life's of approximately 10 years on, on that type of equipment. Uh, we're 14 years in.
14 years, yeah.
Good move.
Anybody else got any questions? How about a motion?
Move to approve, I'm checking.
All righty.
One second.
So Darren. Is that you?
Yes, sir.
All right. It's hard to tell. All right, we got a motion and a second then to approve. So we'll call the question then. And that passes six-zero. I've never bought a street sweeper before, have you Darren?
Nope.
All right, so we'll go, uh, number eight, we'll acknowledge the, uh, monthly sales tax and budget report. Ashley's gonna have good news, right?
It's mostly good, so, uh, I said mostly. Okay, so the good news is, is sales tax in December did come above budget. We are 11% below prior year, however, last year, January, or December, sorry, was abnormally high. And again, the budget is based off the budget numbers and we did come in above those numbers. We'll keep an eye on it to make sure that we don't see any sort of longstanding trend. Remember, we only, um, increased the sales tax estimate by 4%. We cut by 12 and a half and we only increased it by four. So we're still in a safe margin. And the state did, had their December BOE, or Board Equalization Meeting, uh, last Friday. And they have rosier numbers thankfully for the upcoming fiscal year, which I think probably bodes well for the city of Shawnee as well. Um, use tax is also coming in under budget, uh, and that is year-to-date, or not also, is, but is coming in under budget. We're gonna watch it right now, we're only 1% below budget. And the good news is, is it does, it only comprises, well, I should have calculated this before I came up here, but just like, less than 10% of our budget, it's very small in the grand scheme of things. So we'll keep an eye on it, but I don't foresee us having any major budgetary issues because it's only 1% below budget. And, oh, and, um, budget-wise, we're doing okay since our revenue is supporting our expenditures. We did have the street sweeper, but we were able to accommodate it. And we are just keeping an eye on things and making adjustments as necessary. But I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
So these are actually October numbers.
Right.
Yes, this will be October finals and November estimate.
Right. Okay.
So do we ever look at other communities and see how COVID might tell me like a disaster or more to see how we're comparing to those communities?
No, I haven't yet, but I can definitely put that on my to-do list.
I, I mean, just for curiosity, you see how we're comparing to other ones?
I know when those affected more or less by the COVID. Mayor calls that I've been on, I mean, some towns are doing pretty good and some of them really been hurt. So it's been a mixed bag for sure. But.
Stimulus fixing to do should have gone into the first quarter.
Yeah.
Anybody else got any questions for Ashley? So we need a motion to acknowledge these?
I think it's this third one.
I'm sorry?
Oh, you said something about a motion, I was like, oh, I think.
Oh, no, we're, we're, we're good. Just see if anyone wanted to offer, wanna acknowledge.
I'll make a motion.
All right, so Travis.
Second.
And Bob. All right, we got a motion and a second to acknowledge the sales and budget report there. Call the question, what's that? Oh, we don't even need to, okay, very good. So we're already the new business then? No new business? Commissioners' comments? Start with Bob.
Don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Really?
Nope, I'm quiet. I've already said what I was gonna say tonight, so I use up my talking time.
Uh, just like to say again, thank you, uh, to our amazing staff for continuing to work so hard to keep things, um, keep things going in the right direction. I'm impressed every time I have conversations, um, with you all. As to all the things that you're able to do and the things that you keep us going. And so, thank you again for working so hard, appreciate all of you. To the Thomas family, thank you for coming and speaking to us about, um, the wonderful university and, uh, wish you all the, the luck in the coming semester and all the students as well. I know that that is, like I said, for so many people, that's such a huge part of this town. And, and the fact that it brings, it brings people from all over the world and, and kind of makes us unique in doing that, that there, um, sometimes little cities can kind of get stagnant. And I think that that's one of the amazing tools that helps us to, to, to be, um, to be who we are. And so thank you so, for working so hard and appreciate all of your, personally, all of your hard work because I've had several conversations with you and I know how difficult this season is. So thank you, thank you. Definitely continue to pray for you and your family. Just, uh, spoke with Commissioner, um, Matthew today and he said he apologized for not being here. He had a family issue that he kept him away and said to wish you all a Merry Christmas and, and a Happy New Year and hoped that, um, you guys all would forgive him for being absent. And I, I actually say the same thing, Merry Christmas and, and to all of you guys and hope you have a good, good rest of your week.
I want to repeat a little of what Travis said on, on, uh, Dr. Thomas. Thank you very much for being here, for speaking to us, for the work that you put in and everything that OBU does and will continue to do for our community. It's, it's, it's a great partnership and thank you very much. Christmas coming up, remind everybody, if you haven't got your shopping done, shop local. And wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a happy and safe New Year.
Your turn.
I, uh, Chance and for putting together and to ask, like, for putting together the ORDB, or OWRB financing on the water treatment plant. I know it locked into that, but long-term, uh, obviously it saved us a considerable amount of money with the financing we did. And I know, uh, it's a long drawn-out process, but I won't, though, I appreciate that. I think the community appreciates it too and I think it's a smart move. So I got it.
As I've said always, when you're sitting on the end, everything that's been said, but Mayor, if you will, uh, indulge me for a minute, I have,
It's all yours.
I have written out a statement that I would like to read in.
All righty.
So I've always supported the Shawnee Chamber of Commerce, now known as the Shawnee Forward, and their efforts to promote Shawnee and specifically the businesses. I'm concerned about the portion of the rubics that used to determine awarding the money appropriated by this city commission. I refer to the five points given to the members of the Shawnee Forward. If you are a business, do you make payroll or do you pay chamber dues? I fear this may eliminate the ones that the money was intended to help. And I just ask that please, Shawnee Forward, consider eliminating this part of your rubic. And then I'd also like to wish all of the city staff a blessed holiday and have a prosperous and better day, day, day.
It's gotta be better. Thank you, Benny. I don't have a whole lot. You know, I, I, I have a little heartburn with that myself. I, I really wish that number was probably smaller. I mean, that, that, you know, that just, in the way I'd like it to be, but it, it is what it is there, so. Yeah, I would, personally, I wish that number was smaller, Benny, or, or not there, so I, I, I agree with you. But, um, again, want to thank the Thomases for, for coming out to, uh, to visit with us tonight. We really appreciate OBU and everything you guys do for us. And sure good to see you here and love the partnership that we have with you and look forward to working through you and the next year hopefully is not gonna be as crazy as this one was. I think that's probably a pretty safe bet. I want to thank all the, the city staff, which I know we don't have a lot here tonight, I understand why, for, for everything you guys do for us and we appreciate your, your hard work and your, and your effort. And, uh, I'm sure glad we have you guys. Just wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Things are gonna get better. I think, I think there's a light at the end of the tunnel, I'm pretty sure it's not the train. But, um, but I think things are gonna be looking up here, we just have to hang tough and, and get there. So, um, also wanted to just tell you guys, I appreciate working with you guys. I've really enjoyed it and, um, it's been a good year working with you guys, so, um, thank you very much. So with that, I guess we stand adjourned and we go on to the airport authority. So we will look at the consent agenda here, item one. Not much there, is there anybody want to make a motion?
Move to approve.
So we got Darren.
One second.
And Travis. So we have motion and a second, so we'll call the question. I think Benny's went through there. There we go. All right, passes six-zero. Any new business? So we stand adjourned, we go to the municipal authority. All right, item one, approval of consent agenda. Looks like we have minutes there. Anybody want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Bob.
Second.
Darren to second there. All right, let's call the question. Motion passes six-zero, new business. We are adjourned.